We'll call the January 5th City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you can give us the invocation, presentation of colors and the pledge, please.
Let us assume that through prayer. First, grace to all my God, our Father, we come once again, thankful for all the blessings that have been sowed upon us. We ask from the Fathers we come now to take of the business of this city. We ask for God, you lead us, guide us and direct us, and that everything that we shall do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Bless all these that are here to witness of him, the Father, this transaction of business. Bless for God the residents of the city, a place where we live, work and play. In thy son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Presentation of colors?
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like for the day, on January 7th, 1789, was the date set by Congress for states to choose electors for the county's first ever presidential election. A month later, on February 4th, George Washington was elected president by state electors as part of electoral college system and sworn into office on April 30th, 1789. Like for the day.
All right, I'd like to thank the color guard here for helping us out for the first meeting of the new year. Okay, first up, the approval of minutes. Susan, have you got a chance to? I, she's got, there's a couple of corrections we needed to make, but I, what I asked her to run up there and do, and the reason she's just a couple of minutes late is, is to get you a red line so you know the differences between the, the former and the current. So, if you'd like, maybe we'll go on and do the agenda review and then public comment and we'll come back. I mean, there's just some additions, nothing, I don't think there's any subtractions, but, or any, any changes, just additions. But with that, won't we go on to, to Edward, if any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and go ahead and the public comment, give everybody a few minutes to be able to take, take a look at those council meeting notes. Susan?
Okay, we have Leroy Bell.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Leroy Bell. I live at 2308 Blue Meadows Court, Apopka, Florida. On, I think it was December the 15th, at the city council meeting, the mayor read a proclamation, and I would like to know from the city attorney, is the proclamation, is it an executive order? Or what? It's about the early voting. That the mayor decided to move the early voting to one date, back over to Earl K., not Earl K. Wood, but, what is his name? Yeah, the election supervisor, Bill Cowell. And we think that that's disenfranchisement of the people that vote here in Apopka early. Because if you look at all the exit polls and stuff, you show that the majority of the low and moderate income people, especially the elderly, they vote on that date because they don't get out and stand in long lines. I thought that Commissioner Smith would have said something about that because he have an aging group of people that he represent over in South Apopka. And we think that early voting, if it be moved, that it should be something that the city council would consider. If it was a vote, that it would be a full vote before the city council. Because it seems to be the ones that disenfranchise is the people that look like you, Commissioner Vasquez, and you, Commissioner Smith, and myself. And I don't think it's fair to the people, especially if you want to say it's not enough money. The city have found different things with different places, especially with your salary. Matt Nelson, you can figure out a way to pay yourself. You can figure out, well, we just spent money and waste money on COVID, of what, at $257,000. So, I know it should be somewhere that we can find money to let the people exercise their constitutional right by voting early. So, I would like to know what we're gonna do about it.
Thank you.
I ask a question.
This is public comment, thank you.
What, well?
Let me, Edward, I know we, the last election, and Michael, you're shaking your head, no, we've always done it this way.
Well, the voting is, is run by the supervisor of elections, not by the city of Apopka.
Right.
So, and I believe in the special election runoff that we had in, in the, for the special election in 20, my years right, 2020, the, the early voting was also held at the supervisor elections office. There was no early, there are no precincts specified within the city limits for early voting. And since voting is handled by the supervisor of elections, this is probably a matter to be taken up with the supervisor of elections, as they are the ones that administer the city's elections and every city's elections in Orange County.
Well, excuse me, and, and I'm not gonna let you dance around because guess what? The city, if anybody in the city would call the supervisor election like I did, Bill Cowell said that the early voting wasn't, wasn't a decision made by him, it was a decision made by the city of Apopka. And now, this, this is the part of the record, and you're gonna sit there and tell me that it don't happen. We can find money. We can find money in the city budget to pay you a salary that you said that you would take half of. We can take city money and give to your friends in the bank. But when it comes to people look like me, we can't let them exercise their constitutional rights here in the city of Apopka. Why? Disenfranchisement, what are you afraid of? Let the people vote.
Thank you.
So, whose decision is it?
Oh, city council, we can take it up, I, I mean, I'd be happy to take it, let's look at, I don't think the last election.
The city desires to, to, to basically deal with, to, to work with the supervisor of elections to establish a location within the city limits. That would, I mean, they could, we could try to attempt to do such an agreement. However, as I said, the, the last runoff election we had, early voting was held at the supervisor elections office. I'm also trying to, I'm also trying to remember the, well, no, no, but it's, what I make, the, the reason why I gave that example is because the runoff election was the only time where we had the one election where we did not piggyback our city election with a statewide general election. In 2020, we had the statewide presidential election, and therefore, the runoff election was piggybacked along that. So, any, any specific additional early voting sites that the supervisor of election had would have also included within the ballot, the, the first city's election. Then we had the runoff where the city of Apopka was the, it was the only question on the ballot. So, therefore, there was, we did not get to piggyback onto the other early voting sites, and the city had to run its own early voting sites. I don't know what other, if other cities have worked with the supervisor of elections. It would be your prerogative whether to, to enter into an agreement with the supervisor of elections with the supervisor to provide an early voting site within the city limits.
We, we've run early voting location out of the VFW in past elections. I mean, so, I mean, that seemed like it would be an obvious spot. It, it does seem, and I know in years past from municipal elections, it's been the same fashion where you've had people that have had to go down to Orlando. But if we want to encourage the most people to be part of the civic process, it doesn't seem logical for us to have early voting period where you'd have to go to Orlando for our Apopka residents. So, I would be in favor of having an early voting location here within the city of Apopka. Again, I don't think that it would be an expense that would be astronomical considering it's only gonna be a week-long period of time.
Right, that's, that's your call, that's your call to make.
Well, we'll, we'll reach out to the supervisor of elections and see what, you know, what that would entail. I'm not sure with our notices, the other thing is we have to be careful, we've, we've got the notices, we've already, so, I mean, it's a little more complicated than that. Michael, I'll, if you'll kind of look at the legal portion of that, because we've already set the early voting at Bill Cowell's office. So, I need to make sure that we can, we can amend that agreement or amend the ordinance.
Well, it was, we didn't pass by order, it was just a proclamation.
Proclamation.
Now, whether we can vote by resolution to amend the date, as long as we meet the notice requirement, any statutory notice requirements that we are within that timeframe to properly notify of a change of location for an early voting times. The times won't change, all we're, all we'd be doing is.
Moving the early voting from, from down there to here.
Right, so I need to make sure that we are within the timeframes to, to amend such a, a notice and to provide adequate notice to the public.
Yeah. So, was it just the place or the date as well?
All right, Steph.
Yeah, was it, was it just the place?
Yeah.
You have to put it in search, what it was is just the place.
Okay.
Because people don't, can drive over there and catch a bus.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll bring it back next council meeting, and then we've got a, glad we will have to look at, you know, a budget adjustment, I don't know where, I mean, we can find the money, that's not a problem. But, so, we just, we'll just check on making sure we got the legal, we're in legal standing there to make, to make that change, but that's fine, I'm, I'm good with that.
So. And Mayor, let me just say that four, four years ago, when we had the elections and the early voting was downtown to commission, the supervisor election office, I, I asked why we did not have an election here in the city because we were the only ones on the ballot. And that whoever the supervisor election was at that time said that the only time that they do early voting outside of that is when there are other individuals on the ballot, like in a general election, then they have. We pick it back off of it, and that was the reason I was told when I asked that question four years ago.
I, I've got no problem, absolutely. So, we'll, we gotta look at two, the two, you know, the legal side of that, and then we, I mean, the, the financial part's not a, not a big deal, we can, we can take care of that. So, okay, Susan, you got, Mr. Cooper? Come on forward, Mr. Cooper.
I'm gonna need more than four minutes. My name is Michael Cooper, 700 Jim Commerce Court. Twenty years ago, I started building in the city. I built $80 million worth of work from Ocoa Apopka Road up to 441. We put up over 50 buildings. We've gone from an area that was full of crack and cocaine and every else thing you can think of. We cleaned property, we helped the, the south side of Apopka and cleaned it all the way up, all the way up past to the railroad track. Bradshaw Road right now is a plain downright disgrace. There's trash on both sides of the road, the lift station stinks to iota, and there's no excuses. I told them 10 years ago to put charcoal filters on those things and get them cleaned up so people around the area didn't have to smell the odor of the effluent all the time. It's ridiculous. The landscaping around the lift station should have been done years ago. It's a disgrace, you can't even clean it up. The curtains are falling down, they're protected. It's, the whole thing is a disaster, there's trash all the way up. CCC-1 is a horrible mess since we sold it. The, the, your code enforcement is probably the worst code, I don't even know why you're paying any money to them, they don't do nothing. I mean, it's absolutely sickening to go through the city. And I know you guys are spending all the money out in West Apopka because that's where the growth is, but what about the city? What about this city downtown here? It's horrible, all the way, everywhere you look, the, the landscaping along the, the parkways and things like that, horrible. I had Ms. Vasquez out, she went with Deb, and we showed her Second Street. Second Street's a disaster too. I mean, where's your code enforcement? This is downtown, people need to clean up. You go into my area, and it's a very nice looking area, any area I ever had, now that I sold it, it's all seems to go into pot because nobody's doing anything, they sit on their asses and do nothing. When's the last time you guys all drove around the city of Apopka to look at it, look at downtown? Wait a minute, let me finish. And I asked people to look at, Second Street is a disaster, all you do is fix the potholes. It needs to be reworked, totally repaved, totally, all the AOK tires. First Street is just so bad, there's three big chuckles in it, and it's a wonder somebody hadn't sent you a bill for realignment. All First Street needs to be, I don't know who's handling your streets and services, but they don't do a very good job. All the way down to Marshall Lake Road, for 10 years, I've asked people to give us lights and to redo the load and road and bring it up to FDOT standards, it's failing on, fell, fell on deaf, deaf ears. Also, in the newspaper, you said all the roads you're gonna fix. He didn't say anything about First Street, Second Street, Marshall Lake, why? You guys are getting hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of taxes a year. We've paid over a million and a half to $2 million in, in impact fees for roads. Where, where have we got any, anything from the roads? Nothing, we got nothing from you guys. And yet, it hasn't been just yours, Mayor, it's been Mayor Land, Mayor Land did his job. He gave us, he redid Bradshaw Road up to our park, he did that, we handed it to him. Kail Shimer, he was a disaster, you know, and since you've been in here, we haven't had any good fortunes either. And I begged you guys to put lights and do something with Marshall Lake, you haven't done anything. Why? Why don't we get anything for the money we paid? Millions of dollars in impact fees, and we've gotten nothing for it. You're spending all the money out west and so on, we don't get nothing. And that's a shame to have a customer like me, and I'm the customer that pays. I buy from you people, you do nothing for us, nothing. It's just, a homeless, I've got $7 million worth of work going right now at the railroad track on two, three projects. They've got, Four J's is bringing in 80 people, it's a brand new project, it's a $3 million project. Right across the street, the homeless people are sitting there, they're all over there. And I asked months and months ago to have it cleaned up, nothing's been done. I was told by one of your officials here that they knew somebody in the CSX and they would take care of this. Nothing happened, and they're still there. We've got a $2 million project going right now, right this minute, and the homeless people are living right there, they don't clean up anything. I don't know why you don't do something about the homeless people. Give them 30 days to get out of there and then come in and clean it up, get them, get them out of there. Let them go someplace else, outside the city. 10 years ago, I told the mayor at that time that I was willing to put up a house for them and, and build a nice house with 10 or 15 rooms where they can have a place to live. They didn't want them in the city, I was told, don't do that, Cooper, because it's in the city, we don't want the homeless in the city. So, I let it go by the wayside.
Okay, Mr. Cooper, can you wrap it up?
One thing after another, you know, it's just, why? And you guys got money, you got money from me, why didn't you use my money? To help, you know, not just me, but to help a little bit. And all I'm asking for is to get Marshall Lake done, get First Street done, Second Street done, to put lights in, just repave it. That's all, bring it up to FDOT standards like you should. There's semis going up and down Marshall Lake, when they turn out of ours, the road is so small, they're cutting across into the medium on the other side of the road. And there's another project I hear that's gonna go on the other side of our Lake Jim project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll address it, we'll get out with you, we'll get code enforcement.
You know, Mayor, I'm gonna tell you this, I've heard this time and time and time again, and it just doesn't do anything. You know, and, and I wish you would get your code enforcement to do something too. You got houses around here that got boarded up, windows on them, they're, they're, why don't you get them out of here? Clean the place up, spend some time in your, in your town. Every one of you up there, go around the town and look and see what you need to get it cleaned up. Take some of the money you got and spend it instead of doing it all over West Orlando.
I wanna address that one because I did, and during, I said I, I have, and I did. And during budget workshops, that gets construed as I'm grandstanding because I'm going around and taking inventory of the stuff that you're talking about here. And, and it's, and it's valid, you bring valid points, there's areas of our city that are very depressed and they don't need to be.
Commissioner Becker, you might be right, but I've talked about this, it's not just you, it's not just Mayor, it's not none of you other people. It's because you don't get anything done, you talk about it, and you're very good at talking, but when it comes to doing something, you don't get it done. You asked me to do something for you, 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 I will do it and I will have it done immediately, because that's the type of person I am. And with, when you come to landscaping and cleaning things up, I do an extra good job at doing it. I don't necessarily go by exactly what's been approved by DRC, I make it better, my buildings are better. You guys can't even follow me, follow my tracks, my good, I got good tracks, but follow them, at least do half of what I do.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Cooper, thank you for coming in, I appreciate that you came in because, you know, when I took that ride with, with Debbie, I did make a list, and I did provide the list, and I said, these are some of his concerns, and, but I'm, I'm happy that you came in today. I'm happy that you came and voiced what you have been voicing from the very beginning, and I have gone to see Debbie a couple of times. And she has given me some, you know, real issues that are there, and I have brought them into the city.
There's one thing more, whoever gets elected up there as the next mayor ought to come through this city and clean house. If you're not doing your job, you're down the road. It, it starts, it starts with you, the bosses, whoever the bosses are, and it trickles down. If those people below you are not doing their job, they need to go. I mean, sitting in a meeting doesn't do anything, you get out and you work the streets, I worked the streets, I've worked the streets all my life. From Cleveland to Chicago to New York to Philadelphia to San Francisco, I know what it's like, it's not my first job. So, I see this every day. And yes, I thank you for coming out, but again, you went back and talked to people, and what happened to it? Fell on deaf ears.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
So, I'd like to address a few of those things because I've worked with Mr. Cooper on many occasions and the staff as well. And we have been looking at Marshall Lake for lights, for Marshall Road, we've been looking on that. I do want to say that we did change all of the lights on Bradshaw to LED lights, so that's a lot nicer now because Bradshaw's lit up a lot better with, at night. And Second Street, if you recall, came up in our study, and I think it's in our second year, I'm almost positive it's in our second year. We've done a two-year review with our, our Public Works Director, who is an expert in, in road improvement. So, you know, we have somebody on staff that's really good with that, and I think Second Street, I'm almost, I'm, I'm positive, Second Street is, is, it will be resurfaced, it's in the plan to be resurfaced next year. No, next year, in this, not 22 and 23 budget. So, it's on the list, because we had an independent study for that, we had some flooding issues in that area that we've had to address. So, that project's a little more extensive, but we want to make sure we do the, take care of the flooding before we just resurface it. So, you know, those are, we have, we, I, I just want, you know, you to know, the council to know, that we have been working with, through a lot of these issues, you know, so.
And I know that our code enforcement's generated, I want to say $80,000 in 2021. I mean, it's, I know it's north of $60,000 they generated from code enforcement violations, so it's, they're out there hustling.
Well, and you, you as a city council is also, you've added another code enforcement officer, if you recall on the budget, that was an area. You've added another code enforcement officer, so we're putting more resources, adding more people into code enforcement in our code enforcement plan.
Susan, anybody else, is that it? Okay, all right, thank you. Do we want to go back to the, the amended minutes from the?
There were two drafts, is this all, Susan? This was the only one we had to read? Not, and, not these two? What's in these two? Oh, okay, so all of this is for these two, okay.
So, what I, just, just so you, you understand, I, I asked Susan to add, we had the comments from the lady Steele Bailey, and I just want to make sure that, that my, my comments back to her were included. I thought it was, it was pertinent information for the, the minutes to be as presented. So, anyway, anybody else have any questions, concerns, if not, look for a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes of December 15th and the city council workshop meeting of December 15th. So, move. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, consent agenda, got two items on there, anybody need to pull either one of them? If not, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda is, is read. So, move. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Okay. Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, business action item, Addison Farms multifamily, Bobby?
Thank you, good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for a 262-unit apartment complex located at 2828 Hooper Farms Road. The property is 17.48 acres in size. It is accessed via a one gated access point that is located on Benyon Road and one access point on Hooper Farms Road. Turn lanes are provided leading into the site. As part of the project improvements, the applicant has agreed to construct a 230-foot northbound right turn lane leading from Harmon Road to South Benyon Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 12-foot wide multipurpose trail along South Benyon Road, which will connect the existing 12-foot wide multipurpose trail that is currently along South Benyon Road that's located along the vistas of Waters Edge, frontage of that subdivision, so it'll connect into that trail that's there. A total of 472 parking spaces are provided on site, while 346 are required to be apart, required to be provided for the apartment use. Nine are. Nine are accessible parking spaces. Fourteen short-term and sixty-six long-term bicycle parking spaces are provided on site. Ten percent of the site is required to be reserved as open space. The applicant is reserving five point four, five point four-five acres or thirty-two percent of the site as open space. A clubhouse and a pool will be provided in addition to open space forecourts and a central plaza. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. And the recommended motion is to approve the Addison Farms Multifamily Major Development Plan. Uh, staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
What are they doing with the, that's gonna be on Binion, right? And is that the road that's being improved or being widened?
Yeah, the property is on Binion Road.
I'm sorry.
The development's located off of Binion Road, South Binion Road, just to the north of the vistas of Waters Edge Development. As you can see, the vicinity map on the screen, you can see where the property is located at.
And she's just asking, are we gonna improve that?
There'll be turn lanes provided leading into the development. Those will be the improvements related to this project. And then, as I'd mentioned, a northbound right turn lane leading from Harmon Road onto South Binion Road will be constructed as part of the project improvements.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the pub.
I, I do have a question for you, Michael. I just realized this, looking at this, uh, Mr. Hooper, David's father. I had performed his funeral back over a year ago and they had made a donation to our church. And because I'm voting on this, is that an, an issue? I mean, I didn't even think about it until I saw his name here. It had nothing to do with this, you know, it was, but I just wanna make sure everything's up front here.
Under the conflict of interest rules, you don't have a pecuniary.
It didn't come to me personally, but it did come to our church. But we, you know, we just did that in honor of his father, so.
You don't have a pecuniary interest or financial interest in the decision that's being made as it, as it was, as it relates to the property. So it's tenuous at best. It would be the equivalent of if you were a commissioner and you're a shop owner and the applicant has come in and actually purchased something from your shop. I mean, it's, there's no conflict of interest because you don't have an interest in the property, the actual property that's the subject matter before you.
Yeah, and there was no reference to him of anything.
No, you can just, you can, no, there is, it's.
I just wanna make sure.
There, no, there is, I mean, there is no direct quid pro quo and there's no real financial ties to the decision made here into it. Now, if you wish to recuse yourself from the vote, you'll have to submit the, the state paperwork and, and describe the, the, um, conflict of interest if you wish to do so. But there, that there is a conflict of interest, you don't have a financial interest at stake in the decision of this, of this property.
Yeah, and I know it. I mean, for me, it had nothing to do with this. I'd already looked through this before I happened to catch his name on there, so, okay.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve the Addison Farms Multifamily Major Development Plan.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, approval settlement agreement from Narum Global.
Good afternoon. Michael Rodriguez, City Attorney. The settlement agreement before you is related to, if you recall, um, several months ago, this was a matter that was initially presented to the Planning Commission for a special exception to operate a tobacco shop within the, um, downtown zoning district. The, uh, MUD, sorry, I blanked for a second. Um, the decision of the Planning Commission was to approve the special exception. And then, as part of the rendition letter, there was conditions imposed, which restricted the sale of the items to basically prohibit vaping, vape-related products and kratom-related products. The applicant then appealed the matter to the city council. You heard the matter before you and your decision, but on a three-two vote, was to affirm the decision of the Planning Commission. The applicant then subsequently filed a, it's not necessarily an action, but they, um, they decided to proceed forward with appealing the decision, uh, appealing the city's action under the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. That statutory act, um, provides for basically an alternate, alternate, alternate dispute resolution to, um, try to resolve a matter without it going forward in the courts through litigation. The first step under the act is that the parties have to media, have to conduct mediation to see if they can come up with a settlement to the matter. The, uh, city and the applicant conducted a mediation on, uh, in December, December sixteenth, if I recall. And at the mediation, parties entered into a, uh, settlement agreement. Now, as it is with any Florida governmental entity settled, the, uh, a, in a mediation, the local government cannot settle the matter on the spot. The matter, what is done is basically, it's a conditional settlement that has to be brought forward to the city council for approval at a, at an open sunshine meeting. And that's what's presented to you, for you today. Staff agreed to, uh, the parties agreed to amend the language in the land development code to both clarify and bring the city's language consistent with the statutory defined terms for the items that were in question. Mainly, we fall into that crack of what is the basic issue in the, in the dispute, which was tobacco-related and tobacco substitute. So the parties agreed that the best way to resolve it is to clarify the definition from this point forward in a way that it would, um, resolve the situation, but also clarify it for any other applicants going forward. So what the parties agreed and staff agreed was that we would present, as part of a settlement agreement, that the city would amend their land development code to bring its definition of tobacco in line with the statutory definitions. And further, that our definition would also, when the state amends the definition of the ta, of, um, the main language we use, where the tobacco products and tobacco, let me get the language correct. It's tobacco products. Now it won't. Fast forward, there we go. My iPad's not changing pages. Right, so it's the, uh, what the state calls nicotine dispensing devices. So when those items are amended by the legislature, it automatically amends our land development code. We're tied in. So whatever the state's definition is now, and as may be amended from time to time, we'll tie in. So we won't have to continually come before the council to update our definitions. We are basically cross-referencing and directly relating our definitions to the state's definitions for these products. This would allow us to not have to necessarily run afoul of any potential preemption. And also, as is what's most disconcerting to me, is what's coming down the pike from the Florida Legislature when it's coming to their, their current proposed bill, which is basically going to, um, render any decisions to cities that, um, in question is any type of regulation or ordinances that may affect businesses. Um, local businesses are gonna be given the power to sue the local government for any ordinances or regulations that'll affect their profits. This, this way, we are consistent with the state and, and it's going to resolve the situation. Should this settlement agreement not be adopted by the city council today, the matter will then go back before the mediator who present, who was the mediator in our case will then become a special magistrate, who will hear the case. And we will then have to present our evidence and present our cases. And the magistrate will then render a recommendation or a decision, which would then, that decision would be something that would then work its way forward in the court. So the parties came together to try to settle this matter, settle it at best amicably in order to resolve the situations and further to clarify our land development code for future references. One of the issues that did come up, and I'll state this for clarification. One of the conditions that came up at the, the staff level when it was, um, presented for the Planning Commission was the prohibition of the sale of kratom. The issue with kratom is kratom is not regulated by the state at all. It doesn't fall within its, within the tobacco regulations. So therefore, it is an unregulated commercial substance, which, um, the city, in order for the city to, to, to do any prohibitions to that sale, we would have to pass an ordinance to regulate such a, such a product. Um, I don't know of any other local government that has gone that far to regulate specific products. Those are products that are sold on commercial uses. They're not FDA-regulated. They're not FDA-approved. They would be the equivalent of, of selling five-hour energy or any of the, these other types of products that, that folks use because they're not regulated by the state under, under the tobacco laws. They kind of fall in that gray area. If the city's gonna try to step in and really regulate those, now you're, you're stepping into boundaries of how far does a local government want to go to regulate the sale of consumer products, especially with the potential legislation coming down from the state, which will open the, the city to litigation costs and attorney's fees. Because that's the hammer that the state's gonna put down now on all local governments, which is allowing private business owners to sue local governments for impeding profits on their business by their regulations and subject liability for attorney's fees in the process. So with all these things now in mind, that's the settlement that the parties entered into. Once this settlement agreement, if adopted, the amendment to the LVC will be presented to DRC and then Planning Commission and then back to the city council for, um, your final approval, just as we would any other ordinance amending the land development code. Um, available for any questions?
Any questions?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In layman terms, terms, um, I understood what he wanted to sell before and we were kind of splitting hairs. What can he sell now?
He's going, he is gonna be able to sell those products regulated by the state. So those vaping products, if they're nicotine delivery dispensing devices, those are regulated by the state. So he would be able to sell those now. And any tobacco shops in the city would now also include those devices. As long as they meet the state definition for what they are, they would then be permissible to be sold in tobacco shops.
Okay.
And then the other, the other clarification we had, and it was really not clear in our code, the tobacco, what is, what is deemed tobacco products, um, that goes, the state defines that not just to include the sale of tobacco leaves, but, um, there are a lot of other smoke shops that will sell the, um, rolling papers or to make your own cigarettes. Those fall under that state definition. So now it clarifies that. So that brings us in line with the state's definition to allow those tobacco products and those ancillary products relating to tobacco to be sold. And it makes it clear, because our prior code wasn't exactly clear whether those types of products could or cannot be sold.
Okay, so that's it. So what it was, what he wanted to sell before that we said he, well, I'm not gonna say we, but it was a three to two, he can now sell.
He would be able to, once the code is adopted, he, um, he can sell those.
Okay, so this was the agreement and, and during the mediation, he agreed to this?
This is the, this, the, the draft agreement that you're seeing before is what both parties agreed to.
Okay.
So, um, I wasn't aware until today that we pulled this off of consent. I, I did advise count their council, if, if it was going to be an issue, we were gonna remove it of consent, they could be here. And it's because I just found out today that this was off of consent. But I don't, I'm advocating as alongside the applicant for the approval of the, um, of the settlement agreement or recommending for the approval of the settlement agreement as both parties. We both negotiated this at a, um, in the mediation. We had an arm's length discussion and, and negotiation in regard, in regards to the, the language and the end result. And, um, one of the things that also assisted, um, by the time this got to mediation, we had just adopted our glitch bill amendment, which removed the definition of vape and hookah lounges and removed those from the MDU and from the land development code altogether and created that definition of a cigar bar. Um, the owner was actually quite excited over that prospect of the potential of he can actually expand his use to, to, in addition to the tobacco shop, to have a cigar bar, which would be a destination, um, and also a social destination in, in downtown. There are many other cities, um, that have these and are actually quite attractive, um, destinations for, for things to do at night. I'm just, I, I've partaken in these things when I'm down in South Florida.
Okay. I'm glad that we did that and that it was settled.
Any other questions?
I, I don't have questions, but I have comments.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, bring it back to.
Did you have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Becker, I, I.
No, I mean, you were going down the path I was gonna ask. I mean, I, all, out of all the stuff that you said, what's the net-net to the business owner? So you, you explain that.
Okay, Mr. Banksen.
Okay, uh, again, I, I have very concerned, very great concern for what this is doing and where it's steering us. That's my concern is the long term. Is this basically hamstringing us from steering the character of the nature of our city and what we wanna see development? Let me just read, I, I just wrote down my thoughts here. I'm very concerned regarding the nature of our ordinance changes. I believe this would steer the character of the downtown district in a direction that is not best for the city. And I'll stand in fa, I still stand in favor of the planning department's conditions. There's a reason our planning department, which represents the citizens of our community, made their decision. And I believe it is reflective of the desired character and ambiance the community desires without being punitive. If we're in error, I'd be more in favor to the possible negotiation of recompensing loss uh, than changing the ordinance, which opens the door to other things negative to our downtown development and city image and the direction which includes a family-friendly atmosphere. This is in no way personal to our applicant, who was a very nice man. We had lunch together and we talked about these things. And my explanation at that point was for me and my perspective. A stands next to B, B stands next to C, but that doesn't automatically mean A and C go together. And I feel like the nature of some of our, you know, because we talked about what's already there. And, uh, you know, and, and I think had there been clarity, he, and as he expressed to me, I might've chosen a different route. So it's unfortunate that, that lack of clarity was there. And again, I'm willing to say, what do we need to do to make that right? I'm open to it. But I'm concerned that going this route with ordinance, uh, leaves us more open because what's next to C is D. Well, D could be a tattoo parlor. Do they have the right then to come in, in an area that if we go back to the vision of the downtown area, was supposed to be very much of a public, walking, shopping, dining, family-oriented ambiance? So I'm not, uh, you know, I've got a lot of things listed. I could pass these out with different websites of my concerns. My main concern is the vaping. And because I've dealt so much with youth and deal with those issues, uh, there, there's a strong concern for that. I'll read a little bit more. My great concern is the terrible negative impact it has on our children. And statistically, it's devastating as vape is marketed to children, has become a draw to them. Unfortunately, it's not regulated as tobacco and, and alcohol have been regulated to protect children and young people. It's a new emerging thing. And again, there, there, this is still part of the argument. It's something that still, our society is still grappling with. How do we address this? And, um, basically, you know, several websites that I've put down here, uh, concerns are toxic metals, nickel, lead, chromium, tin, and aluminum. This is specifically for vaping. Uh, the highly addictive nicotine levels creating cravings and other addictive symptoms. It can contain acryline, which can cause irreversible lung damage, hand tremors, severe mood swings, dangerous chemicals along with vapor, with the water vapor, and especially in the developing teen brain, changing the way the brain works and more vulnerable, uh, to addictive nature. But it's not just for children. Again, uh, it, the AARP.org online magazine under health, conditions, and treatments, uh, updated October seventeenth, twenty nineteen. So this is a few years back. If you're over fifty, vaping is officially high time to switch off that e-cigarette. All those scary headline-grabbing warnings about vaping-related illnesses apply to you too. Everyone, including older adults, should refrain from using all e-cigarettes and vape products as Brian King, Deputy Director for the Research Translation of the Office on Smoking and Health at the Centers for Disease Control. Reports of severe breathing problems and deaths related to vaping begin to surface in late summer and have now soared to twelve ninety-nine confirmed cases of vaping-related illness. There have been thirty-three confirmed deaths as of October seventeenth. This was twenty nineteen. Roughly half of them in people over age fifty, according to the CDC. Most vaping patients are under, were under thirty-five, but new CDC reports show adults older than fifty are getting hit hard. Among three hundred and forty-two people with vaping illness, sixty-nine percent of those were over age fifty. And it continues there. Uh, I mean, again, we can remember our own history back to the nineteenth century where we gave cocaine drops and, and laudanum to children for toothaches. You know, we learn as we go and sometimes we don't know it until it happens. And, uh, the opiate issues that we faced in this last century is something that now we're grappling with and kind of reversing. Um, I'm not a proponent of limiting personal liberty that doesn't harm others. Uh, but I'm a proponent of regulating such to safeguard the young and vulnerable as we have always, already done in other areas of industry, including alcohol and tobacco. Um, I'm concerned about the long-term direction and character of our city that our decision makes. Thus, I'm in favor of holding our present ordinance and seeking other options for remedy for and with Narum Global. So again, this is not a personal issue. My big concern is. My big concern is, where is it steering us? Where does C lead to? Where does D go? And are, I just want to look at it from the legal aspect. I know that's what you're presenting, and I appreciate that work. But is it compromising something that alleviates this problem, but opens a door to other problems? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, and just as a way of response, and this is more of a big picture, because it's not really related to this item, because we're talking about the effects of the Land Development Code and the amendment to the Land Development Code, is that tobacco shops remain as a special exception use in the MUD district. So these are still, any other future applicant that comes in wanting to adopt, to bring in this use in the MUD, is still going to have to undergo the same special exception use. They're going to have to meet the standards that the special exception ordinance provides, and those standards are objective, and they remain so. And as long as they meet those, and there's going to be an opportunity for the staff and the Planning Commission to take a look at those and examine the applicant individually. This is not, the definition, while amended, does not go any further to mean that these are now uses that are allowed, permitted by right in the zoning district. These are still special exception uses that are still going to be subject to scrutiny on the part of staff and the Planning Commission to meet the objective standards of the special exception ordinance in the Land Development Code. So that does remain, that has not been changed. So really, as these applicants come in, if they do come in, they're going to have to meet those standards, and if there's going to be any issues that arise from those applications, they can be addressed by the city and staff.
And we've gotten to this point, not necessarily that we've even had the authority as a council to overturn the decision of whether or not it was a valid business or not within the district, because the Planning Commission, in their sole authority, had the ability to approve or deny the special exception, which in their case, they approved it. It's just that I argued in the appeal process that there was a level of specificity in that hearing that I did not see, and that's why I voted in the dissent on the last appeal process. But at no time did this council ever have the authority to overturn the idea of whether or not this place of business could or could not operate. That was not a decision that this council was being asked to make, nor would we be able to overturn that, that decision, because it wasn't presented to that as an appeal. We're simply here contemplating whether or not we want to, through this settlement, by extension, any revisions to the Land Development Code, say that we kind of ride with what the state statute says in terms of what the definition of a tobacco, tobacco shop, and what's permissible to be sold within those locations. Correct?
Correct. And in the end, we wanted to avoid any potential, in order to, one, settle the matter, and two, avoid any potential disputes with the state in terms of how much authority local governments have to regulate an area that while the state, the actual statute does provide for a preemption, I think the language of preemption in the statute is still a bit hazy, but because the legislature and the state is providing such a strong hammer against local governments in terms of the issue of preemption, this was the best avenue to try to resolve the situation and bring us more in line with the state to avoid any potential tripfalls, pitfalls, that we may encounter in the future in an area of preemption. Again, and putting this in line, which was bolstered once the proposed bills were passed, with that bill coming down the pike from the legislature, which is basically going to hamstring many local governments, not just us, but I think every county and city in the state of Florida is going to be hamstrung by this bill if it were to, if the legislature were to pass it.
And if I can say, in the applicant's favor, of course, he came in seeing other businesses like this, and so I can understand why there would be the assumption that this means that. And so my question is then, with what you're saying, are you saying that the Planning Council had the ability to say, "We deny the special exception because of where it is"?
The Planning Council...
And so what you're changing is in line with the state regulations, but the problem now is, they already gave him the okay. He spent money, he went forward, and now he suffers harm and has to be remedied in some way.
The Planning Council's decision was actually an approval of the special exception. The Plan, what, they did approve.
So they could have denied it.
They could have...
But the question to Commissioner Banksen's point, which I, that's where I was going to head, is, had the P&amp;Z Board not approved the variants, we'd be in a different situation today.
If the, if the Planning Commission denied the special exception use, he would have never been able to open, period.
Okay, that's, I think that's your point.
That's my point. So how do we protect in the future, if there's something that comes in that we know is not fitting with either the desire of our city, our people that we're supposed to be working for, to say, "We really don't want it to develop like that. We really want to see this ambiance, or this nature." You know, what protects us for being able to steer the quality of that and say, "Well, maybe we can allow it over here in this park, but it's not in line," the same reason that we don't allow certain establishes within, you know, 500 feet of a school?
Well, the future remedy, and it would not affect, once, if this settlement is approved, and because the property owner's here, I would stress, it would not affect his use, because he's already an approved use. If you wish to really steer the types of uses, then you're looking at an overall amendment to the MUD district to have uses that would, that would fall in line with what you're aiming for. If that were to be the case, any future amendments to the MUD removing certain uses, or even removing his use from the permitted uses, it would not mean he has to shut down his business. He would just become a non-conforming use with the MUD. But if the vision for the MUD or any other district is such that you want to change it, you can amend the district to reflect that vision that you have for the use, but any uses that are already there prior to the amendment would be non-conforming uses.
So perhaps to answer my own question, if it is special use, we can deny it as a special use?
Any, if you, if you amend the, speaking hypothetically, in the future, you decide you want to amend the MUD district, you want to create a different type of district, you would just remove tobacco shop from a special exception use from MUD. But it would not mean, doing so would not close down his business, he just becomes a non-conforming use. So he can continue to operate.
So the fact that, let's say, a tattoo parlor pulling, not attacking anyone, but let's say, they said, "Well, he's there, and that works well with a smoke shop environment." Are we obligated then for that? Or is that something that if it's lined out that...
If that use is removed from that district, then no, they would not be, they would not be permitted.
So there's still a protection for us?
Correct. If you, if you wish...
To steer things...
Right. If you want to amend, if you want to amend the Land Development Code to define what permitted uses and special exception uses you want to put in a specific district, you can do so.
But the fact that Planning Council accepted it, we have no power?
No, they, no, if, because they approved the special use, what was brought before you was that additional condition that was placed, and it was really an interpretive condition, because the Planning Commission's decision is, well, based on what the definition of the tobacco shop is, Planning Commission's position was, "We don't believe these products fall within that definition. Therefore, he has a special exception to operate this, but he can't sell this because it's not listed." The rendition letter clarified, basically enumerated, that which clarified the missing language in the tobacco shop definition, and that's what was brought forward. So now we're coming here to try to clarify that language. Now we're tightening it up, saying, "Look, now there's no question," because we were stuck with, is vaping tobacco substitute or tobacco-related? And we went to the state to, for guidance on the definition, and the state defines a nicotine delivery system within the ambit of tobacco, therefore, we said, "This is the best way we can be consistent with the state language and not run afoul of any preemption arguments or any other regulatory arguments. Let's bring our language consistent with the state and move forward with that wording."
Commissioner Becker, I know you've been...
What I was saying is, points that were both made already, the only way for us as a council to officially control that would be for us to revise the permitted use table for each of our zoning districts. That's one way, top-down, heavy-handed, you're not going in here. Opposite is, if it's a special exception, all of that authority is with the Planning Commission, end of story, unless such decision is, they deny the application, and the applicant appeals to this council. But most of the time, if they get that, that use, and in this case, a tobacco shop in an area where any one of the five of us could disagree with that, if that's a proper location or not, but if Planning Commission approves that in the majority, we're at the mercy of that decision, assuming that there's no other appeals to this body.
Correct. And then, and just to be careful, just because it's a special exception, doesn't mean there's any wiggle room for the city, for a local government to deny a use because they don't agree with it. If an applicant comes in and establishes that they meet the objective standards for a special exception, the inference is that they are going to be, they are going to be granted the special exception. The appellate courts are pretty strong in stating that you can't have subjective standards and guidelines for special exceptions. An applicant meets those objective standards, and the evidence supports that, you've got to grant it. And many a times, local governments have denied special exceptions, appellate courts have come back and stated, "No, they met the standards." They remand the matter back to this local government to say, "You have to approve the special exception because they meet your standards."
So basically, you're saying it doesn't protect us?
Your protection would be if you wish to adopt in the future amendments to the zoning code to really dictate the types of uses. That's the, that's the tool that local governments have within zoning, is if you desire a certain vision for a neighborhood, either create a special zoning district to create. Many local governments have created specific, you know, center-city entertainment districts, and they, they list, enumerate these permitted uses, they wanted these districts to attract these types of uses there to do that. That's, that's your tool under zoning to do so. And if that's something that's your prerogative to go into the future, and you can, staff will examine it, and we'll proceed forward on that track. That would be, that's the tool to protect. It's, that's what the powers you have, is you can zone areas to meet the vision of what you want for an area. That's really the purpose of zoning.
And so if we don't approve this settlement agreement, what happens?
If we don't, if this settlement agreement is denied, then the matter is going to go back before the mediator, who will become a special magistrate, and we're going to have an evidentiary hearing.
Well, let...
And it will be the first step prior to us then ending up in court and having to then litigate this matter one way or another, for then the court to decide whether, how our interpretation of tobacco substitute products falls.
Well, Michael, I guess the other option is we, and I'm sorry if we didn't, you didn't know that this was coming off consent, I didn't want it, it's too big of an issue not to be an actual item, so we pulled it off, Edward, and apologies to you. But depending on the way this vote goes, I think if, because they don't have legal representation, I think we'd almost need to table this and bring it back, and we almost need to do that anyway. I know I have some concerns, I know...
Well, the, I mean, the issue is, it's basically the settlement agreement as presented, as presented to you, whether you approve or deny the settlement agreement. If it's the case, then we're going to go back into the state process.
Well, they can come back, they can go back to City Council with the attorneys, and we...
I mean, we could do that, I think it will, whether it'll affect our timeframe, but I'm, I mean, I can probably state in the applicant's here that what I'm stating, I think his council is going to say the same thing. I mean, we were, we were at the mediation, it's the, it's the same thing. We are both presenting to the council the recommendation to approve the settlement agreement.
I understand that, but we ultimately have the, you need three votes up here for that, that settlement agreement to go through. If we don't get three, three votes, affirmative votes, can we then just, instead of making that, then the presiding, the, who's on the prevailing side, could they then pull it back and say, table it until the next meeting?
So...
Well, if it's, it's one of two things that are going to happen. If it fails here, it's going to go, we're going to be back before the...
No, what I'm saying is, we, I think we could bring it back to City Council if it doesn't pass for, instead of going back right to the courts and bring it back to City Council...
Right, well, we're outside, we're outside of the courts right now.
Correct. Understand.
So, I mean, it's going to be one of two things. Either this, because we're not in litigation, we can always come back with an agreement that the two parties enter into.
I'm not following what being...
But I don't...
Well, what I'm saying is, if, let's just say that we only get two affirmative votes...
If it, if it fails, we go, we're, if it, if we don't get the approval, we're going to go, we're back before the magistrate, we're going to be back before the magistrate. Now, we can either...
He could have his attorney, though, come and maybe present some additional information that, that would maybe sway one of the no votes. I'm just...
But how do we know what the no votes are? We haven't taken it.
Well, I know that, that was my question, is the prevailing side can always table it, go back, open it back, I'm just...
I mean, we could, we can table this for a final decision and allow his council to make a presentation, too. It's, it shouldn't, but it's...
But they're equally, they're on a level playing field, so how would that presentation differ from what you just told us?
Well, that's what I stated. We, right now, we're not in an adversarial, the, me, city staff and the city attorney's office is not in an adversarial position to the applicant's council. We're both in the same, in the same position. So it's either going to delay, I don't want to say delay the inevitable one way or another by two weeks. The timeframe we're looking at, if we got this approved, was we were looking at a, I think we were looking at what, February, February Planning Com, Planning Commission and March approval to change the LDC in order to resolve the situation. I think if we delay it two, if we delay it to the next meeting, we still will be, we'll still be on the same...
Advertising-wise, we're...
It might, might end up pushing this whole thing another month.
So is Planning Commission currently in agreement with this settlement agreement?
No, no, this, no, Planning Commission is not, is not in agreement, but Planning Commission will be presented the amended Land Development Code for their recommend, for recommendation to the, to the City Council.
Well, in all fairness, the Planning Commission has not heard this.
No, they have not heard...
Correct. It's not like they're against it, they haven't heard this piece of business.
They haven't, no, they haven't heard or nor seen the amended, the amendment to the Land Development Code.
Here, for me, they made their decision with the assumption, now wrong assumption at this point, that it would, that they could eliminate those things. Had they known it wouldn't have eliminated them, I think they might have come to a different conclusion. So I'm simply saying, we're being presented in something that's already been negotiated, without saying, "Well, can't we possibly negotiate something else?" I'm kind of going back to our personal conversation, the loss that was suffered, is, are we responsible for that by being unclear, and he having an assumption that he had been given a green light and spent resources towards that? I mean, that's just one way of looking at it. What would make him whole and be just and fair, without necessarily saying, "Well, we already are here, so now we just have to do this." Again, that's affecting our forward motion for this, this area. And I may be the only one that would feel that way, it's just, that's my genuine feeling. I'm trying to always hear, what's the voice of the people? And for me, they reflect that voice of the people. And once they heard that it would include these other products, they said, "Wait a minute, we didn't know it meant that. We thought it meant this." So that's not, that's, that's unfortunate to the applicant. He has his understanding, they had their understanding, and it wasn't stated clearly. So that's not his fault as well, so I think there should be something to remedy that. I just want that opportunity to maybe look at another way to negotiate that.
At this point, because we're at this situation, I want to give the applicants the opportunity to have their council speak and not have to go this forward, especially since during the discussions, I gave my word to the applicant's council that if things were not looking, that they weren't going to be able to go smoothly through consent, I would give them a call to participate, because I didn't know till today. I recommend, I, I'll move that we table this matter to the next City Council meeting and give Mr. Spain the opportunity to appear on behalf of his client.
So would it, so if we wait two weeks, can we make sure that we're in the hopper, even based on whatever determination we make, that we don't, he doesn't lose time, or can we make that?
We can advertise it, and then if it's not going to be removed...
Yeah, we could, can we go ahead? So, so he won't lose any, I mean, I'm not trying to...
We can prepare it for advertising if it's going to go forward, because it would be, it's, it's an LDC, and if it doesn't go forward, it's just removed.
So we, we won't lose any time if we table this for two weeks and come back, and we'll, we'll, at that point, make a final decision? Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's the right, the right move, and...
All right, so move that we table it.
I look for emotion from the council.
Is the applicant, are you, is this a timeline that you're comfortable with? Again, we're being asked to table something where there's no compelling reason as why we're tabling it.
Well, the compelling reason is that, that because this is a settlement agreement, the approval of the settlement agreement is right now in flux, because the applicant is represented by council, and this is a matter that both the city attorney's office and the applicant's council negotiated as part of the mediation, the initial intent was, if this was a matter that was going to be removed off consent, and there was a, there was a possibility for discussion, I told opposing council, "I'm going to call you so that you can come." Because I didn't find out till today that this got removed from consent, I didn't have the opportunity to call opposing council to be here. I don't want to run afoul, I, I think it's ethically proper that we... I don't want to run afoul, I think it's ethically proper that we give opposing council the opportunity to be here and speak in defense of the settlement agreement as well.
The disconnect for me is, on our agenda packet, it was never in consent. So we got our agenda packet on Friday, so now we're on Wednesday. So we're wasting time here, council.
Understood. I prepared the item to be placed on consent. When I prepared the item, it was checked to be on consent, I was never told that it was removed from consent. When I approved and moved it forward, it was forwarded in consent. So that's the concern. And I want, I don't want to move forward or delay anything without, I want to give council the opportunity to be here and be heard.
And we're not going to lose it. They're not going to lose one day.
No. The schedule for approval of the LDC amendment will remain the same as if it would have been approved today or not.
The other thought is, again, we can't say boo to one another about any of these issues, so I don't know. But we are now in public council. Is it okay for different ones to say whether they would be for or against it? You know, I'm one person. This is what I believe. I'm just simply preparing this, but I'm not against, you know. I love business, and I empathize with the position that Mr. Segarian is in, but I'm still concerned about what I feel is the right direction for our city. So I want him to be made whole in whatever is the right way to do that without us hindering ourselves now for future decisions. That's kind of where I'm at on it. But it's up to the will of the council.
Well, the way that I understand it, if we're aligning our definition of tobacco to line up with the state's definition, and even if we did not approve this settlement agreement, and then another business owner came, and we would still be in the same position if we don't correct the definition that it aligns with the state.
If another use similar to this comes in and asks to be approved as a special exception in a district that would permit such a use as a special exception, yes, we would be in the same, because the staff's position is that vaping is not a tobacco-related product.
Which does not align with the state's definition.
The state's definition calls vaping and nicotine dispensing devices, and those definitions fall within the tobacco regulations. So the inference would be that the state treats the vaping items and regulates them in a similar, the state does regulate vaping and vaping products. And some of these, and they fall within the definition of, within the definitions of tobacco. So that's the question.
Cigarettes aren't named super cherry and all these things that really appeal to children. That's my concern about vaping specifically. You know, I'm not here to tell adults what they can and can't.
Right. Unfortunately, that specific area is an area where the local governments are preempted from regulating. We can't regulate, we cannot step in there and do that. That is an area where we can regulate to an extent, but the state has preempted the full regulation, the manufacturing, the distribution of these products. The state has preempted the subject matter. So we can't, even if we wanted to, we cannot without facing the wrath of the state. The limited areas where we believe we do have the authority to regulate is in, within zoning as to where they can be sold or not, but we cannot regulate that they cannot be sold within the city limits. At that point now, that subject has been preempted to the state. So this amendment is going to clarify the definition and bring us in line with the state's definition as to where these can be sold, not whether or not they can or cannot be sold within the city limits. We cannot regulate that regulation, the sale, we are preempted. We cannot say that we don't agree with this use, therefore, within the city limits of Apopka, no vaping products can be sold. That flies counter to the state's preemption of the subject matter. So we can't do that. As much as if we believe they're evil, we cannot do that.
Well, I'm looking for a motion to approve the settlement agreement between Narum Global Inc. and the city in reference to the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act.
Are we looking for an approval or are we table? Well, I have requested tabling the matter, but if it's, if it looks like this is, the settlement agreement is going to be approved, I don't think there's any prejudice to the other side because both parties are looking at this.
Or motion to.
We can either table this to give opposing council the opportunity to be here, be heard, but if you're leaning on voting to approve the settlement agreement, we can move forward and move.
Let me tip my hand here, and I've already talked through the process of why we're here to begin with. But again, I argued during the appeal process that there was an enumeration of items on the rendition letter that I didn't think were a formal request of staff to specifically constrain this business owner from selling. And in that case, there was confusion during that testimony, during that hearing that I witnessed, that's, you know, there was a lot of conversation around, oh, do you think this means this or this means that? Well, now we have a definitive answer based off the state law for us to reconcile our legal definition to. That allows for this use. The permitted use of his business as a special exception was taken by the Planning Commission. That's not us, that's not the piece of business here to decide today. So for me, it's reconciling to whatever the state law is, and in that case, then I don't know what we're arguing here, and I would agree with the settlement.
And if we approve this settlement, and it goes back to the Planning Commission, do they have the authority to overrule us?
No. No, 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 no. This settlement just means, right. The effect of this settlement is that the parties agreed that staff is going to bring forward for adoption an amendment to the land development code which changes and clarifies the definition of tobacco shop. That's all. Now, the agreement does not mean that this amendment will take effect. We are prohibited by law from doing so. We can't agree by contract to rezone. That's contract zoning, and it's prohibited by state law. All this agreement does is, we agree that staff will bring forward this amendment for, to undergo the requirements for approval of an ordinance amending the land development code. So approving the settlement agreement means that staff is going to now present this amendment to DRC, to Planning Commission, and to city council for approval.
And if we think that there's going to be some mass proliferation of tobacco shops within the downtown district, that's where it's incumbent upon this council to go and address our permitted use tables.
Correct. That's the avenue to go.
Because then, if we fast forward, the Planning Commission is going to then look at the state law and decide whether or not they want to reconcile the LDC to the state law. And if they do, again, special exception will still be on the case, and they would be able to approve or deny based off of that definition. However, again, going back to the point made before, is if we completely remove those out of the downtown zoning district.
That is something that you can do for any future, for the future, basically. So that is your tool. If this use is in, we reconcile the situation, this owner will proceed forward. If you do not believe that this is a use you want to see in certain parts of the city, then it's upon you, incumbent upon you, to amend the land development code to basically restrict where you want to see these, just like we did with dollar stores.
All right. Well, I would encourage everyone to go and look at the dangers of vaping online. And obviously, those are adult decisions that adults have the right to make. I'm concerned for anything that would be glamorized and hurt the future, that we're going to have to now go to the state and chew on their ear to say our kids are at danger. Look at what's going on. And again, this is nothing personal to you. I know you're a good man, and, well, let me just say that, you know, I would hope that maybe, and what I was trying to say is maybe rather than this being the negotiation, can we maybe find some other way that mitigates the loss that you've had? And hopefully, just in your good nature, just not glamorize the vaping side of things. But that's a decision you're free to make as a business owner, that we can't, as you said, we can't regulate that. So, those are my concerns.
And Commissioner, I emphasize with your concerns, but I also want to be careful that we're not treading into an area that the city has no authority to regulate.
I understand.
And we don't have that authority to regulate. We can express those concerns to the state and see if the state takes action, but the city's hands are tied because that's a subject matter that's been preempted to the state. And we cannot, we cannot regulate the item more than what the state allows us to regulate, which in my interpretation is basically where we can, where they can be sold or not, not whether they can or cannot be sold.
All right. Wrap this thing up. So I guess, look for a motion to prove or table. I mean, I'm ready to approve it, and somebody make the motion, and.
I would move to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
What, I'm sorry.
We're approving the settlement agreement.
What are we doing?
We're approving the settlement. We're moving, it's a motion to approve the settlement agreement.
Oh, okay. All right. You know, I'm just like, okay. Yes.
Okay.
An aye for me.
Okay. And those opposed?
No.
No. Three to two.
Three, two, or four? I thought it was four, one.
No, four, one.
Three, two.
Who else voted no? Okay. So approve three, two.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, for all your hard work on that one. Next up.
Can I just say something with that?
Can you read out the vote again? Sorry, I missed that, too.
I have three, two to approve with Mayor Nelson and Commissioner Bankston approve. No, denied. So the settlement agreement has been approved by a three, two vote with Nelson and Bankston in the dissent.
All right. Edward?
Mayor, the city council, the item before you this afternoon is to transfer a city parcel unit 162 to the Orlando Apopka Airport Association. If you recall, there's some history. I wanted to give you kind of a little bit of history on this. In June of 2011, the Orlando Apopka Airport Association and the city entered into an easement agreement. There is a parcel in your package, a small strip between the railroad tracks and the actual runway. In that agreement, it was considered an obstacle-free zone. So the city owned that parcel, but couldn't do anything with it. There was an easement as long as for the airport because you can't build anything or construct anything in that area. For further clarification, there was also cleanup on that parcel. So the cleanup on that parcel, we had an agreement with FDIP that we were working with. We had to do some petroleum cleanup on there. We have recently, as of just this December, received the completion order that everything is cleaned up and everything is good. So today, what you're doing is, today what we're asking, staff is asking for, is to transfer that parcel to the association, the HOA association. In return for that portion, the city has asked, and if you recall, when we sold the airport, the city had asked the HOA, once we have that cleaned up, we'll, you know, we'll look to transfer that parcel. But in exchange for that, we would like those first 15 parking spots or spaces to be able to have an exclusive license agreement and rights so that whoever has the FBO, and at that time, it was us when we were talking through this, but then you sold the FBO, there was a transfer, a license transfer on the agreement when you sold the airport, that once we made this transfer, once we did this transfer, those 15 spaces would go to that new owner. So they would have the exclusive right to have those 15 spaces, which was critical for them to have parking at the actual, for the airport. So one of the things that staff also did, we went back and we felt that, hey, that was a piece that was an easement we couldn't do anything with. We were paying HOA fees on it as an owner from the city. So we went back and we told them, hey, we want our assessments back. You know, we feel that we didn't have any rights, couldn't do much with it, you know, we owned it, but we couldn't do anything with it. We wanted, we would like, you know, them to look at refunding us the HOA fees that we paid over time, and they have elected to do that in this agreement as well as part of the transfer. So, and that's a little over $10,000 that we will be receiving a refund back from that. So with that being said, we're looking for the approval and authorize the city administrator to prepare this transfer, execute this agreement, and prepare the transfer with the association for the parcel, and then complete the transfer of the license for the parking spaces to the new owners of the FBO.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve and authorize the city administrator to execute an agreement to transfer city parcel unit 162 to the Orlando Apopka Airport Association.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankston.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2022-01, First Amendment of the Year.
Resolution 2022-01, resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a rest of the amendment.
Good afternoon. Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director for the City of Apopka. Resolution number 2022-01, it's a request of amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending on September 30, 2022, and total amendment is for $150,000. The amendment is for the Apopka Resource Center, and the funding is from the General Fund, Duke Energy Funds. This amendment appropriates funding from the Apopka Resource Center project. Over the last several months, the city council was provided information as requested from the representatives for the Apopka Resource Center. At the November 17, 2021, the city council meeting, a plan was presented to the city council for consideration and review. This is just a formal proposal agreement related to the Apopka Resource Center, and that will come back to the city council for approval at a later time. This is just to appropriate the $150,000 amended budget for it. So I am requesting an amended budget for $150,000.
So a couple comments on this one. This is strange to me because this seems backwards to what we've normally done. Like, we do these appropriations or kind of changes after we've approved business. I'm just curious as to why we're going, taking this route for this piece.
Commissioners, Commissioner, what we're doing is, we are marking this dollar. It was designated, as you said before. This is the last piece. There's one small piece for the Conley House. This is the last piece. So we are, we are doing the amendment to mark that $150,000 piece. Keep in mind, this is the appropriation. This appropriation will not be spent until you have an agreement or something, approval back for you. Just because you're doing the budget amendment doesn't mean we have, we're going to spend the money.
I'm just curious. It seems like we're doing two pieces of business for one item. Why wouldn't this just be all on one agenda? And another point being made is, yeah, we've received information at the last public hearing that we talked about this Apopka Resource Center. I said that I wanted to meet with their board. I've received no such invitation to do that. So if they want my vote, that's still an open invite.
Okay. Well, and like I said, this is to put on the books, to get the 150 marked on the books so that we have it secured, we have it. It's the last piece of their Duke Energy dollars besides the design on the Conley House, which we'll be bringing you that one, too. Again, the budget amendment puts the money in the appropriation. We will not, without the direction of the city council, we will not spend the money. The dollars will not be spent. They'll just be marked there, so.
Yeah, because I know I spoke to you, because I remember it was earmarked, so can you just, and now we're putting it as an appropriations, but, and they did present this on November 17, and I kind of agree that, I was hoping that they would reach out to us that we can sit individually with them on the board, because I read this, but it's just something that they've been doing, but it's not a real mission statement, and I don't, I have no idea how they're going to start this program. And I wanted to sit with them as a board. And also, I don't even know who their board members are. At the last council meeting, I learned that our mayor sits on the board. So I was, I was not aware of that until the last.
So, Commissioner, so let me, I guess let me go back and talk about your earmark, your designation. So when we did the original Duke Energy monies, we had everything designated, and we bring amendments to you when we were ready to appropriate the dollars. What we have right now is, because these dollars are sitting in a pot altogether, this will earmark that last piece and will bring you the other piece of those dollars so that they will, those dollars actually got where they needed to be. They're not sitting in that big pool anymore. They're sitting earmarked. Just because it's in the, the transfer is here, it's a counting thing for us to say the dollars are there, it's labeled this, so that it's not mixed in with all the other dollars. Makes it, it's better for accounting. But at the end of the day, you still have to, you know, after your meetings and, you know, and if, when they bring the agreement back to the city council, whatever the wishes are with the city council, those dollars will either be used for that, appropriated and used for that, or they will, the appropriation collapses and it'll go back into the, to the, back into the reserves. Or, or back into, you know, back into the pot, like the reserve pot. Or you can give direction to spend it somewhere else.
Well, I mean, this, I guess the point that I'm making is, this has been earmarked before we entered into the new budget year. So I don't, I'm curious as to why we're having to take a specific piece of business when this has already been earmarked. when this has already been earmarked even before the last budget. So what I would have assumed, that all of that accounting, if you will, would have been satisfied going into this budget year. So, and then all other pieces of business where we've had to do some sort of appropriation change or reallocation, that's always happened in the same agenda as the piece of business that we, we approved or denied. So to me, this seems strange and unneeded.
Well, and, and again, if you, if, if the agreement doesn't come, if you, guys, if there's an agreement that does, if the city council does not entertain an agreement or, or bring that information back for, after you have your meetings or, or staff, you know, is, is given a, is given a proposal, then the appropriation will just lapse. It will not, it won't be moved. This is a way for us to market so that we can make sure that this is the last piece that is in of the dollars.
But again, we've already earmarked it. We've already talked about this multiple times as a council. Like, does this, this piece of business mean that we really earmark it this time? Like, again, it's, it's pointless business.
What the other, the way it was before, it was unassigned. It was, it was designated and you're unassigned. This will assign that 150 to that particular item. If, if the agreement comes, if, if a proposal agreement comes back to you, however, whatever the wishes are of the council at that time, that, that, this amendment, it'll lapse, go back in, or it'll be set up so that that agreement can be executed.
Any other questions for Edward or Vladimir?
I just have one question.
And, and that is, of all those funds that we earmarked from the Duke Energy money, has all of those budget amendments already been done with the exception of the Conley House?
Yes, sir. Every one of them has been. You've approved every one of them except for the Conley House.
For the Conley House.
Keep in mind, there was one where we, the, the amount where we were going to refund debt, but we applied that to the Camp Leeway purchase. So that is our, that, and that's one of the reasons why we want to move this piece out, because it's mixed in there now with all of those dollars that we were going to use for Camp Leeway. And if you know, if, if, um, based on, on where we are, we've been approved for the million-dollar grant. We have not received that yet. So when that comes in, that, we've advanced that. When that comes in, that will help. So what we're trying to do is those dollars that are in that, in that big pot that we were going to use for Camp Leeway, they have been used up. And so this will pull that 150, set it as an appropriation. And again, if, if you don't approve an agreement, the appropriation will lapse and it'll go back into the reserves. If you do approve an appropriation based on 150, 100, one, whatever, it will be there, marked there.
So when will we get the budget agreement for the Conley portion?
We are, um, currently procurement's working on a design, putting out professional services for a design, architectural design, because as you know, Commissioner, we also have, we're, we want to get some, an architectural design person, professional services, because we've got the building at Public Services. We've got the bird park that you've approved. We've got the Conley House that we want to do, and so, and...
Fran Carlton.
And Fran Carlton. So we've got design, we've got, we want to get, um, we don't have a design person on staff. And so we want to be able to, to get, um, go out to bid and get a professional design, architectural designer, so that we can get all those projects done, and that piece will come, come for you, come to you as well. And maybe we should have brought that at this one too, you know, I mean, you know, we'll bring it at the next one. We should have probably brought that one too. That's the only pieces left hanging out there.
I, I just don't, I mean, again, not to beat a dead horse here, but all of these things were known before budget. So for us to do one-off journal entry, entries like these are, it just seems, because at the end of the day, regardless of the vote here, it doesn't matter, because if the presentation comes to approve this resource center, and then it's just an overwhelmingly compelling case to, to, to fund it, you know, it's not like this business would preclude if it failed for that action to occur, like, it just...
No, it's just, all this, what this does is it's an accounting, this is an accounting to show you that all of your Duke Energy dollars went exactly where you had, planned for them to go in the beginning from an appropriation.
Vladimir, where are we at on the, the RFQ for the design?
Um, we are waiting to get somebody to come and hire it to do all the designs at the same time. We still don't have somebody.
I know, but when will you have that? Any idea? The reason I bring it, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to table this for two weeks if, and we can table, we can table it till the...
Until they're completed.
If you want to do that, I'm, I'm perfectly fine. That, that, that gives, anybody who would like to meet with the Next Step Foundation, you know, the, the chance to meet with them, if that, that worked for you, we can, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, because again, at the end of the day, this, this, we're being asked to decision today is not going to be the make or break of the resource center. The resource center is going to be made or broken based off of, again, my desire to meet with the board as well as whatever's presented to this council at the time that that decision is being made.
Yeah, well, I think that's fine. Okay, you can do that. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to, hopefully, we can, you know, get the RFQ for the, uh, the design, you know.
Complete.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be great. So with that, I just look for a motion then to, to, um...
Table.
To, I guess, table for now. I mean, I don't know, we'll have a, an actual date. I mean, we'll bring them both back together, so look for a motion to table. The city administrator, so just to table the, um, Resolution 2022-01.
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
And can we suggest that we bring both of them back together?
Yes, that's what, yes.
That way to clear up all of that Duke Energy money.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. That's what we're going to do. Okay, city council reports. Mr. Velazquez.
Other than Happy New Year.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah, I extended the meeting already, so Happy New Year.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
And my response is the same. Happy New Year.
All right. Mr. Becker?
Uh, time's four. Happy New Year.
Okay. All right. Michael, anything?
I did some quick looking, just to clarify, and we can present this or at least some direction in regards to the early voting.
Okay.
Just quickly, a, um, the supervisor of election, they're bound by statute to designate an early voting site no later than 30 day, no later than the 30th day prior to an election, and shall designate an early voting area. Now, the statute provides that cities can provide, may provide early voting in municipal elections that are not held in conjunction with county or state elections. If we do provide early voting, it may, the city may designate as many sites as necessary and shall conduct its activities in accordance with the provisions of the, the statute in regards to general election. However, it does state that the supervisor is not required to conduct early voting if it is provided pursuant to this subsection. So I think we need to speak and conduct, and do things in conjunction with the supervisor of elections.
Sure.
Because we do not provide our own municipal elections. Every one of our elections is done by the supervisor of elections. So if we work with the supervisor, I think the supervisor is going to have to designate the early voting location, and by statute, early voting locations must be either supervisor of elections branch offices or any city-owned building. So potentially, well, it's, it's specific to, uh, let me get the language that the statute has. City hall, permanent public, public, uh, public library facility, fairgrounds, civic center, courthouse, county commission building, stadium, convention center, government-owned senior center, or government-owned community center as an early voting site. So we can designate such, but I think it's going to, it's best to be done in conjunction with the supervisor of elections to have them name it.
Okay.
It looks like we still will be within the timeframe that the supervisor can name an early voting site.
Okay. Perfect.
So, but was, is there a cost associated with that?
Yes.
It is.
Well, because we, because the supervisor of elections is the one who's actually operating our elections. We're not conducting the elections ourselves, that we are going to have to, um, provide for the costs for the supervisor of election to use the early voting site, bring the early voting machinery, uh, print the ballots and transport them to the early voting sites as opposed to it being already onsite there. Um, we're going to have to accommodate the costs of bringing that to this location.
And you will have that additional cost for us at the next...
Once we, we come to an agreement with the supervisor of elections, what that, what those costs will be.
All right. Edward?
Real quick, I actually have some positive information on the sales tax finally. A positive note, right? So, um, as you can see, we are, um, a quarter of the way in our new fiscal year, and, um, we're a little more than $48,000 above the budget projection. Keep in mind, the dollars that you see in front of you for December are actually for October. So, you know, the, the Thanksgiving and Christmas months, we haven't seen yet, so it'll be interesting to see them when they come in. But it is a very, this is a positive note, that, um, we are, um, a little bit over the actual, um, projections that we receive from the state. So that's good news, positive news.
Yeah, because I had read in, um, from Orange County, that they did very well in October, November with the sales tax, better than what they had expected.
And usually, that's usually the same sign for us too, since we, it all goes in the pot and we share based on a formula. So that's, that's good news.
All right. Thank, thank you, Edward. Appreciate it. All right. Um, I'm waiting on an update. I'll see if I get it. But let me just kind of, I'll go over a couple of things, um, you know, the NOMI help testing site update. So I want to go back and just kind of bring everybody forward. You know, we, we started the program, just kind of an interesting, my, my first employee in, as a state legislator was, um, a kid, University of Florida graduate that, uh, happens to represent NOMI. And call me, says, hey, would you like, uh, you know, a testing site? So I said, sure, we'd love to have testing, you know, at the time, it was just one, the one big one down at Barnett Park. And so on August 14th, we, we set up at Edwards Field. And so we ran the, the, the program through. We stopped on the, the Fall Festival, moved it over to City Hall, still no, no real heavy activity. And then they were supposed to go back to Edwards Field after the tree lighting. So we wanted, you know, not affect as few people as, that, you know, wanted to come to, to Kipland Nelson Park. Well, they didn't, they didn't perform, and so we, we went out and I had Public Works go out and, and, uh, find somebody to move the trailers. They couldn't, they were going to be two weeks later, you know, finding trailers as traffic was stacked all the way back up to Highland Manor. So I got a company to come in, move the two trailers back over to, to, um, Edwards Field. And, and so anyway, been running, um, it was kind of at a, at a low ebb, and now they've, they've ramped up their number of people. Can y'all hang on one second? This is her. Hey Rebecca, I'm, I'm the city council, which, they're there. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, bye. So that, that was, that was the girl that runs the process. So anyway, currently, so they, they've doubled the staff there, and we're now testing approximately 1,200 people per day. We had the PCR as, as well as rapid testing. We ran out of rapid testing yesterday after, excuse me, two days ago, late afternoon. They've just now received them. That was her. Uh, so we now have the rapid test as well as the PCR test down there with a, with the, the potential to do 1,200 per day. So it's, I mean, I think a great benefit to the folks here in, in Northwest Orange County, not just Apopka. But I, but I do want to, I want to give a shout out, you talk about a, what a, uh, uh, not a community effort, a city effort, but I had Public Works getting the, the trailers moved. I had my IT guys down. They had four printers that went down. Had IT had Bob and Rob, or no, Bob and Michael down, down there unjamming two printers. I had Parks and Rec down, five, five printers, I'm sorry, five printers. I had Parks and Rec down lining the field up so we could get, you know, adequate parking and get people kind of lined up. I've had police down there and fire down there. So I think in admin, I've been down there pretty much every day. So, I mean, it's been a team effort, you know, all our city departments have been, been included in, in getting this thing up and running, and they're, I think they've really got it on, on track to, you know, to do, you know, 1,200 folks a day. And so I think, um, I think a lot of people are appreciative. Obviously, we've had some hiccups, but appreciative that we've, we're, we're there. Now for the bad news, um, the state of Florida positivity rate at 26.5%. The Orange County positivity rate at 31.6%. Uh, our Edwards Field positivity rate is 18.8%. So anyway, uh, we, we feel like it's, they're on a good, you know, a good track. I, you know, it could be any, any minute, every, any day that they run out of, you know, the, the rapid tests. It's, you know, I guess they get them just like everybody else gets them, and they won't know when, when the next shipment's coming. But, uh, we will keep, I know IT, uh, Kelly's been working hard to keep, and, and Stacy in my office to make sure as, as we find out they're either back in or, or they're out, that we, we try to inform the public as best we can. Next up, um, LED lights. Just want to let you know, we, we've turned on, um, I know Mr. Cooper's already left, but we have now turned on 441, 29 lights that have been upgraded on 441 between AMSCOT and Public Storage. And we've added 16 new lights between, uh, AMSCOT and the Days Inn. So a lot of, if you get a chance to drive by, you know, which is where we've had a lot of our fatalities, right there, uh, it's, it's, um, really a, a pleasant surprise to see the, the amount of light that they're getting down there. And last but not least, um, utility billing payments. I know Commissioner Smith, I think you brought up phone-in payments, and we are going live tomorrow, kind of a pilot, but hopefully you make that full-time. And so you'll be able to do your utility billing, billing, uh, over the phone. So with that, close the public hearing.